He's gonna be here in a minute, so just excuse him when he walks in. With that, we will start with the invocation, and we have a pastor from Faith Free Will Baptist Church, Pastor Christian Powell. You wanna come up and let's do the blessing, I mean, the prayer? You know, I've been thinking about eating. We're glad to have you, glad you came tonight, sir.
Yes, sir. Let's pray together. Lord Jesus, we come before you tonight thankful for these ones in this room. Thank you that you instituted civil government to be a blessing to people. Father, we pray tonight for guidance, wisdom. You said in your word in James 1:5, "If any man lack wisdom, let us ask of you." I'm thankful, Lord, that you don't scold us or fuss at us for calling on you and asking and seeking your face. We really do desire your help. It's not just a formality, Lord. We really do realize that without you helping us, we don't have any hope. We don't have any help. Our human wisdom comes to an end at some point, and we rest in you. We seek your face. So I thank you particularly for these men. I pray that you'd give them equity, justice, wisdom tonight as they make decisions. I pray, God, that you would help us to be a people and a city that's governed by principle, motivated by kindness, love for all of our citizens. Lord, we believe that that's the love that you showed to us. And we love you tonight. We thank you for our mayor. Thank you for the city councilman and the members in this chamber. We thank you, Lord, and pray for our police chief, Chief West. We pray for our fire chief, Chief Whaley. All the men and women that serve us on a daily basis, we thank you for them. We realize according to Romans 13 that they're ministers as well, and we appreciate them so very much. Blessed tonight in a special way in this meeting, and we'll thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for coming. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Court, we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Mayhaw.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember August.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhaw.
We're all present. Next, we'll move to public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to speak for up to three minutes, we welcome you to come and give the clerk your name and address, and you would have three minutes to speak on anything you'd like to. Would anybody like to speak? Love seeing no one? Ah, Mr. Wright, I almost got you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman, City Manager.
Good evening, sir.
Charles Wright. I just wanted to come before the city council to bring up a couple of points that I've been itching to share with the city council. First on the list, and you each got one, is KLEA. That stands for Commission Accreditation for Law Enforcement. I know the chief is saying he's working on that. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that, one, you can go online and use the, download the manuals for free, and they let you look at their manuals and the titles of each of the programs for free. And I bring that up because we're starting to talk about body cams, SWAT units, hiring, property, storage of property, and KLEA has a policy, a written policy, for each one of those things. And I would hate, one or two years down the line, we do all these things and find out, oh, we shouldn't have ordered this body cam because KLEA hasn't certified this company. Or we shouldn't have had this type of property storage unit because KLEA has not certified. So that's why I think it's important we try to push this forward because we, our police department, not that I find anything wrong with what they're doing, it's just that I'm concerned that if we get too far along with their projects and we do get KLEA certification, they will come back and say, hey, this doesn't meet. And I also just want to emphasize that that information is free. If I was a law enforcement agency, I could download it myself and use their manuals for free of charge. Second thing was mosquito spraying and testing. Some of the city council members may not remember, I know Chuck Allen do. We used to do that. I don't know why we stopped. I remember the truck coming down my street every evening between 6:00 and 6:30. We're hearing a lot about the Zika virus, but even without the Zika virus, the mosquitoes still bite, and I was just wondering what happened to that. If we could implement it, I think it would be a good thing. The Air Force has very good knowledge on mosquito catching and how to catch them and where to put the tents out. They would be a good resource if the city need anything. The next thing I want to briefly mention was department heads and minority hiring. There I put reverse outcomes, guidance from Attorney General, and hiring firms that can conduct independent studies on our minority hiring practices, especially for department heads. When I put in there reverse outcomes, all I'm saying is that I remember when the city had less minority population, we seemed to have more men of color as department heads. Now we have greater minority population, but we have less, it appears to me, less minority department heads. So it's like, the more minority population we get, the less people we have in charge, and I don't want us to be heading down a Ferguson road somewhere in the future. So if we could just get an impartial company to come in and do a resource. Keeping up the grass on H.B. Brown basketball court is terrible. I did notify the city about that a week ago. It's unusable for playing basketball because all the grass is about two inches, all in the cracks. That happened years ago. Ice gets in it, it gets torn up, but right now you cannot play basketball out of H.B. Brown Park. The other thing is examine our common practice of 50-50 deals. Ever since I've been here, the cities always say, the county gives 50%, the city gets 50%. The county, we need to look at that again. We are down to 28.75% of the county. That's all Goldsboro is, 28.75% of the population. So as we shrink, we should just not arbitrarily say we're gonna do half of hiring a person, half give them to the open house. We need to relook at that 50-50. And the last thing I have is the contract, a survey to see the amount of residents living outside of Goldsboro who is using Goldsboro Recreation Facilities and Programs. And here again, I notice our budget in our parks and recreations is increasing, but our population is decreasing. So the question comes, where is that money going to? If our population is decreasing, but our recreation, we giving more, but, you know, are we spending more money on recreation activities on a larger part of Wayne County, not necessarily the Goldsboro taxpayers who's paying for the Goldsboro Parks and Recreation?
All right, Mr. Wright, I just wanted to note that I gave you your three minutes for this meeting and your three minutes for the next meeting.
And as always, I would entertain.
Yeah, well, Mr. Wright, I'm always glad to see you, to see you care about the community because you're always here. I do agree with you pertaining to the 50-50 between the city and Wayne, so I think that's something I definitely look at, also agree with you when it comes to hiring minorities. I think that the city manager and I, we've been talking about that, getting some department heads in certain areas.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing, and our public comment time, and we'll move to presentations. And the first one we have is a Summer Reading Month proclamation. You may come on up here. And we have, um...
Scott.
Scott, I can't remember your last name, and you're from, you're actually with the library?
Yes, Wayne County Public Library.
Before I read the proclamation, tell us what you do.
Okay, I work at the Wayne County Public Library, and I am an Every Child Ready to Read Program Coordinator. And what that is, is it gives parents resources and information on how to get their children ready to read before they ever enter kindergarten. And so I go out into the housing communities, and I give the parents the information, and I also do reading programs for the children.
I think it's important to mention, because this is a really important subject, I think, to the city, and that is that the statistics show that half the kids going into third grade can't read at grade level, and probably about half the kids going into kindergarten can't carry on a conversation or don't have the fundamentals to learn.
Absolutely.
Would that be a correct statement?
That is correct.
And that's just a huge problem, because one of the best ways out of poverty or anything is an education, and the ability to read.
Absolutely.
And we've talked a lot about that, there's been a lot of meetings, I know there's a lot of good folks working on that, from Dr. Taylor to Donna, to the Housing Authority.
Yes.
And so I just commend you all for what you're doing, and I think we, Chaco helped me with my numbers, but I think we said there's a thousand kids in the city that we're primarily worried about, and if every person will mentally read whatever you can to a kid, it'll be, make a huge difference. We're gonna have to do it one kid at a time. And so I know y'all are working hard on that, and I've talked to Anthony with the Housing Authority, and I know he's trying to gear up over the winter to even do better in some of the housing units next year.
Yes.
So we look forward to just making this thing keep growing.
Yes.
All right, well, with that, I'll be quiet and I'll read your proclamation.
All right.
Proclamation, Summer Reading Month. Whereas Summer Reading Month presents the opportunity for parents, educators, and the general public to recognize the importance of summer reading and the role reading plays in summer learning. Whereas summer reading and learning programs are proving to maintain and advance students' academic and social growth, keep children safe and healthy, as well as sending young children back to school ready to learn. Whereas a single most effective way to combat summer learning loss is for children to read over the summer. Whereas the most effective way to improve reading skills is to read regularly and often, and daily reading while young creates good reading skills for life. Whereas a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreation centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth through the summer reading programs. Whereas summer reading is a critical component of our collective effort to ensure all students graduate from high school prepared for college careers in life. Now therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim August 2016 as Summer Reading Month in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and do hereby call upon all citizens of Goldsboro to become volunteer readers through the Wayne County Public Library, the local school system, or any community-based organization to combat summer reading and learning laws to ensure that our children do not fall behind. Also by volunteering during Summer Reading Month to read 30 minutes to an hour with kids and engaging them in conversations and related activities to promote that reading. I'm gonna give this to you.
Okay.
Where's my photographer?
She's right there. Ma'am? What is your name?
Autumn Scott.
She's nice lady, but she'll still charge you over.
He works cheaper than you do. Well, let's take the stick and that off. That would look pretty good. I must like to. Since we got married. All right. Get a center now. All right, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing, okay?
Thank you.
All right. You got one make any comments?
Well, on behalf of the Wayne County Public Library, our director, Donna Phillips, and all the Wayne County Public Library employees, I would like to thank the mayor, the city manager, and all the council members for declaring August Summer Reading Month in Wayne County. We truly appreciate the city of Goldsboro and all the agencies in the city for helping the library to ensure that children in our community are reading throughout the summer and ready to return to school in the fall. We would also like to thank the Housing Authority of Goldsboro, North, of Goldsboro, for allowing the library to come in their communities and read to their children and provide information for the parents that live in those communities. This proclamation will spotlight the importance of literacy and hopefully inspire others to become more involved. Thank you again, and let's keep reading.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we have Purple Heart Day, and Vic, you're here to receive that, and Councilmember Broadway's gonna do that.
Come on up here, Vic. And Vic, would you just take an, just a short and say what this Purple Heart, who's doing the Purple Heart Dinner? Veterans Coalition? And who is, and how many people are affected? Just...
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
City Councilman, Mayor Allen, thank you for having us today. What we do every year is the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition put on the Purple Heart banquet, and what it is, it's a way to celebrate those who are wounded in combat. And it's our way of saying, thank you for the sacrifices, thank you for what you've done, and it's at no cost to the recipient and up to three members of their family that they want to bring. So we do this every year. We mainly run off of donations. We could not do it without the city, or the city of Goldsboro, or the Wayne County Commissioners. So we do this every year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna say some more in my closing remarks about the Purple Heart, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation now.
Thank you.
You gotta go get your picture made with it.
No, you don't, gonna do the work, you're gonna get the picture. Let's go.
Proclamation, Purple Heart Day. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. Whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7, 1782, during the Revolutionary War, and was the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit. And whereas on February 22, 1932, the Purple Heart was revived on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth out of respect to his memory and military achievements. And per United States Army Regulation, the Purple Heart is awarded in the name of the President of the United States to any member of the armed forces of the United States who is wounded or killed in action against an enemy of the United States or as a result of any act or any such enemy or opposing armed forces. And throughout the nation's history, the men and women of the United States Armed Forces have answered the call to duty with honor, decency, and selfishness, demonstrated bravery and courage in the face of danger. And in the defense of freedom, many loyal and brave Americans have been killed or injured in the performance of their duties, and it is especially fitting that we set aside a day to recognize the services and sacrifice of all our citizens who have been decorated with the Purple Heart. Now therefore, Chuck Allen, Mayor of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, does hereby proclaim, proclaim August 7, 2016, as Purple Heart Day. And the City of Goldsboro, in honor of those who have received the Purple Heart, encourage citizens to support the Purple Heart banquet on August 5, 2016, with special tribute which will be given to our local Purple Heart recipients. And witness thereof, I therefore set my hand and seal. And I'd like to say just one thing very quickly. When you go there, and I think it's 61...
Yes.
...Purple Heart recipients we're gonna be honoring this time, but we're also honoring the families of departed spouses of Gold Star, one Gold Star families who have people right now in combat or have been wounded, and also some that have been killed either in combat, families of people. So there's about 400 people, they get a full meal and taken care of. But the one thing I wanted to mention is you see those men and women walk across that stage, you never knew they had a Purple Heart. You wouldn't believe. There'd be people that you see every day, and all of a sudden, you find out, they were in combat and they had a Purple Heart. It's amazing. So I'm finished.
And I made a career not getting a Purple Heart. Thank you. Thanks for your time. Thank you, Vic. Thanks for all y'all did.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, with that, we'll move to the public hearings. We have one public hearing for the $10 million bond order, and I guess Ms. King, you're gonna handle that? All right.
Item C is a public hearing for the $10 million bond order, adoption of the $3 million Parks and Recreation Facility bonds, the $7 million Street Bonds, and adoption of the resolution calling a referendum for the November 8, 2016 election. The Goldsboro City Council is considering the authorization of $3 million for the Parks and Recreation Facility bonds and $7 million for the Street Bonds. The notice of the public hearing was published in the Goldsboro News/Argus on July 20, 2016 for this bond order. The following procedures, proceedings must be approved by the city council in order to move forward with the November 8 election. Council adopt the bond order authorizing the $3 million Parks and Recreation Facility bonds, adopt the bond order authorizing the $7 million Street Bonds, and adopt the resolution authorizing the calling of a referendum on November 8, 2016 for the $3 million Parks and Recreation Facility bonds and the $7 million for the Street Bonds. It's recommended that after the public hearing is held tonight, council approve the bond order authorizing the $3 million for the Parks and Recreation Facility bonds and the $7 million for the Street Bonds, and adopt the attached resolution calling for the bond referendum on the November 8, 2016 election for the $10 million bond order.
All right, any questions, Kay? All right, if not, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak for or against the two bond issues, one for $7 million for Street, one for $3 million for the Parks and Recreation. If anybody would like to speak, now would be your time. Yes, sir?
If you have a question.
Sure. Come up here to the microphone, if you would, please.
What would the city use for collateral against these bonds?
Okay, great, if I'm wrong, but our collateral is our ability to tax and pledging our tax revenue back to pay off the bond.
Then it would be the resident's property.
You wouldn't have access to your property, because the council is saying that they will use the tax money we collect to then pay our bonded debtors. That is our pledge to pay, and that is sufficient for the bonds. We wouldn't have access to take your property. The council would have access to tax your property, which they currently do. But we're not talking about an increase in tax to do it, it's the current tax levy on your property.
We're not talking about an increase right now.
Yes, sir.
But that is a possibility.
You know, I guess always over time, the tax rate does go up and go down over time as it goes forwards. I wouldn't tell you they would never go up, but they're not anticipated to go up relative to this bond sale.
Okay, if the city defaulted on the bonds, what the bond holders...
The local government commission in our state would not allow the city to default. The state would come in, in our state, the state has the authority to come, control our finances, and pay our debts. We would not default on the bonds.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else got any questions or comments? All right, well, with that, we'll close the public hearing, and you have a recommendation before you. Wait a minute. Mr. Wright, you're getting slower and slower. We're not quite closed this public hearing yet.
Just look at that and pass that around. Charles Wright, President, Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
City Council. I come before you tonight because as a President of Wayne County Citizens for Better Schools, we were not in favor of the multi-sports complex or soccer complex as a standalone item. One of the things, discussion points, and I like to bring up, is that during the planning stages, it was not known up to the very end that this would be open to all Wayne County citizens. So as a matter of just common civic duty, I think if it's gonna be open to all Wayne County citizens, that all Wayne County citizens pay their fair share. And here again, we're talking about 28.7% of the Wayne County population paying for roughly almost 70% of the other population that uses this facility. Two, is this really a recreation need versus a sports tourism need? The answer is quite simple. It's a sports tourism need. It's been in the sports tour and recreation in their minutes every single month for the last 38 months. It was never in the Parks and Recreation meetings because they never even discussed it in the Parks and Recreation Committee meetings. Third, we have over 50 soccer fields in Wayne County, 50. And we even have what's called the Wayne County Soccer Complex being built or added to as we talk now out of Highway 581, which will probably be two fields that already have lights in place, and another eight additional fields, and there are bulldozers out there as we speak, expanding that. And I don't know if we've even looked at that. Wayne County, there again, we have 124,000, Goldsboro have 35,000, we have 28.76% of this population. Here again, with the budget, in 2010, we had $1,009,000. Now in 2006, we have $3.78 million as far as the Parks and Recreation budget, and it keeps going higher and higher as our population gets lower and low. This is a project for greater tourism dollars through soccer tournaments, plain and simple. There's no involvement of Goldsboro Parks and Recreation Committee, which is a violation of city policy. You look under Goldsboro Parks and Recreation Committee, and it's their job to approve all sports events, especially those involving land leases and what have you. Number nine, eight, no transparency, no public information on meetings, and almost all the meetings concerning this sports soccer complex was on Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Number nine, the three, nothing was said about $3 million being in a bond referendum. And you can hold me true to that, Mr. Mayor. All that was said was, we get $3 million, ball, $3 million from Wayne County Commission is gonna lend us $3 million at a very low 1.5% interest rate, and all the other monies would come from the tourism tax. Now here comes a $3 million bond referendum, and all I want to know, because it's unclear whether the $3 million is still gonna come from the county commissioners, and this is gonna be $3 million loan from the county commissioners, plus a $3 million bond referendum? Or is it, or has the county commissioners reneged and say, no, we not gonna give you a loan, city, anymore, $3 million? You have to go out and get your own. So are we looking at now, you need $6 million or $3 million? It's very, and in today's, you put a recreation bond, all up until the day, you was calling it the multi-sports complex bond, and now you rechange the words, and it's very confusing to the public exactly what this $3 million is said in the paper, to jumpstart the multi-sports complex. And number 10, as a matter of record, United States Air Force Headquarters position on this is that Seymour Johnson wanted, A, artificial soccer field with lights, not necessarily a $12 million project. So as such, Wayne County citizens, we do not support a bond referendum for the multi-sports complex, especially if the majority of the people who will be enjoying this don't even live in Goldsboro. So why are we continually footing recreation bills for children that live outside of our district, outside of Goldsboro? Let them pay their fair share, you know, some kind of way, not just freebies. You know, in this case, I wouldn't mind if I just got here in the Air Force, living out in the county, because I can come to the city for all my entertainment for free and only pay one tax. So much for the multi-sports complex. The other thing which I find confusing is, is it meant to separate the pavement? Is this a à la carte where voting comes and you can choose whether or not, do you have to choose the whole $10 million as a package? Or can you say, yes, I choose the street pavement for $7 million bond, but no to the $3 million multi-sports or soccer complex? Can you do it individually, or is it grouped together as a package? So you have to vote yes or no on the whole $10 million? The way it's came out on your, it's kinda confusing because it listed separately. The way it was printed in the News/Argus, because people have given me a call about that, and they asked precisely what I'm bringing up. Are these separate line items where you vote $3 million, or is it together $10 million with the idea you vote yes or no, and no goes for both, yes goes for both? As far as the pavement, I just wanna make a couple of quick comments on that. It was already brought up in your work study, so I like to think I'm not the only one thinking down that path. Before you ask the people to give up $7 million for a bond, at least online or somewhere, it should have the identifications of streets and neighborhoods that's gonna get this pavement. Just don't say, give me $7 million, and let us decide where it goes. Identify the streets or the neighborhoods where these pavements gonna go. Have some type of priority. Ask, let the citizens know whether these streets are occupied by homes. Are they occupied, or are they all boarded up? Are they occupied by business or industry? Or some of these streets have a junkyard at the end of the street where, you know, hey, let them compete with the dust, it's a junkyard. Are they occupied by business or industry? Or some of these streets have a junkyard at the end of the street where, you know, hey, let them compete with the dust. It's a junkyard, or does people? So I think that needs to be, there should be greater emphasis on current city tax use, some explanation, and I think I read something briefly about that online where it said, with the amount appropriated for streets, it would take thirty years to pave every street, and some of us may not even be here by the time the city gets around the pavement. But spell that out a little bit better. More information and greater transparency as far as the Goldsboro pavement. We do not take a position on that because we like to see more information in exactly how that seven million dollars, what streets is going to be involved. And I don't think that's asking a whole lot because you've spent considerable amount of time just talking about one street in one neighborhood this evening in your group. So I'm assuming this seven million will involve a lot more streets, and if you had questions about it, I would hope you think your citizens would have the same questions that members of the city council had earlier this evening. And that's all I had to say, and I appreciate... And the picture I passed around is just so each of the councilmen can understand and see exactly how big the plan is for these. These are not little small soccer fields. They are huge, and what the city is proposing in the multi-sports, the soccer complex is eight of those. So just multiply that picture by eight, and you get an ideal of, and that would just add, that would be fifty-eight soccer fields in Wayne County. And if anybody have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it. I know it's a public hearing, but in any event, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
We are going to address a couple of your questions once we close the public hearing, okay? Does anybody else want to speak?
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing for the bond. And Mr. Wright, with the help of Scott and Kay, I do want to answer a couple of your questions. The county is still going to give us the three million. What we're trying to do is complete more of the project with the bond issue. It allows us to do more of the project faster, so that was the idea of the bond issue. It is a vote of, and Kay, you correct me, seven million for street bonds, three million for the complex. You can vote yes or no to either one. So it's not one or all, or however, it's either way. The wording of the recreation facilities bond, we had nothing to do with that. I'm sure that's some legal thing that Kay had, something that she had to do with. And I do think it's our plan to have more work sessions and identify the streets in the seven million, or at least further, it may not be a specific street, but at least a whole lot further of a work plan. The council has more intent to do that, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, well, with that, we've got the consent agenda, and I guess we've got some items left to go through.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I suggest we start at item K and let you finish those, and when you're done, you have the whole group there to consent, or so we'd be back up for a few minutes.
Item K, site landscaping building elevation plans, Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins. The site is located on the southeast corner of Cashwell Drive North Brooklyn Boulevard. The property was previously occupied by PNC Bank, but has not been occupied since then. The submitted plan indicates an existing three thousand four hundred ninety-two square foot building on the site will be retrofitted to accommodate a drive-through and sit-down restaurant. A parking lot containing thirty-seven spaces, including two handicap spaces, will serve the restaurant. This is the submitted site plan. This is Cashwell Drive, as shown here. This is Brooklyn Boulevard. This is the existing building, as shown here. This is the parking for the existing building, shown here. The drive-through would be in this area, this is the drive-through one, and the cars would be stacked up in this area here. NCDOT has looked at it and required that they install the tipitones, as you see here, around the parking lot, and that will come to this point here. A total of eighteen parking spaces are required for the restaurant, and a total of thirty-three parking spaces, including two spaces are proposed. Access to the restaurant is shown to be provided through two existing curb cuts along Brooklyn Boulevard and one curb cut from Cashwell Drive. NCDOT will require that the curb cut closest to the intersection to be closed. The plans are to be revised to reflect that closure. These are the two curb cuts, shown here on Brooklyn Boulevard. NCDOT is requesting that this curb cut be closed. Existing vegetation is being retained to meet the vehicle surface area or plant requirements. HVAC units will be roof mounted and appropriate screen. Building elevation plans have been submitted, which indicate the traditional colors of Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin' Robbins. Although the renders appear to meet the city's building design standards, staff will review our material for compliance. These are the proposed elevations. At that meeting held on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, the planning commission recommended approval of the site landscaping building elevation plans subject to revision of the plans to reflect closure of the driveway on Brooklyn Boulevard, which is closest to the Cashwell Drive intersection. Pavement of the interconnectivity easement to the east is subject to the building elevation plan with city buildings' design standards. And the recommendation would be by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the site landscaping building elevation plans subject to revision of the plans to reflect closure of the driveway on Brooklyn Boulevard, closest to the Cashwell Drive intersection. Pavement of the easement providing interconnectivity to the east and building elevation plans combined with the city's building design standards. The interconnectivity will be provided in this location here. And for the record, there are plans for the owners of this location that when the property that had the putt-putt, or those buildings have been removed, there are plans in a recorded easement that's recorded in the Wayne County arrest of these, that this drive here for the Waffle House, interconnectivity will be provided from this drive back down to serve this property, and they're also proposing that interconnectivity would be from this point here to also serve Dunkin' Donuts.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So L, we got a municipal agreement between city and Goldsboro and NCDOT.
Union Station. Julie, you doing that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the city council, earlier this year at your council retreat, Craig Newton from the North Carolina Rail Division and I shared two grant opportunities that were available to advanced projects related to the Union Station and/or the Union Station GWTA projects. One you approved last month at a ten percent match that will complete several outstanding items unfunded through the Tiger Grant. Agenda item L pertains to the other opportunity designed specifically to impact the historic Union Station building, particularly its immediate need of roof replacement. Just to give some background, the city of Goldsboro and the North Carolina Department of Transportation began discussing a partnership between the two entities in two thousand and five to address the interest to acquire and restore the Union Station located at one oh one North Carolina Street in Goldsboro, North Carolina. The purpose was to secure the station for future reuse as a multimodal transportation facility within the property, including our local transit provider, GWTA, and to secure it as a passenger rail hub for future expanded passenger rail service connecting Raleigh to Wilmington. While passenger rail of service has not yet been established, the interim plan was to utilize this space if funding became available as an event center. NCDOT acquired the property in two thousand seven and through two grants, one provided by NCDOT and another provided by the Federal Highway Administration. The city of Goldsboro has entered into agreements where we provided matching funds to acquire and stabilize the building. Approximately two point two million dollars has been invested to acquire the property, stabilize the structure, provide select demolition, perform a historic finish analysis, conduct environmental studies, and prepare construction plans for the rehabilitation. The city of Goldsboro's total investment to date directly linked to this project is estimated at about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The city accepted ownership of the building in April of two thousand nine. Since that time, no investment has been made to the building and the construction plans for a future rehabilitation. The building requires some immediate attention, particularly to the roof, as weakness in the roof system is causing damage to the interior and structure. NCDOT is willing to provide a grant of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars to replace the roof as originally intended and detailed in the construction plans of two thousand ten and eleven. This grant would require a municipal agreement and a fifty percent match by the city of Goldsboro equaling two hundred and eighty-six thousand. But at this time, we have requested a phased approach that would commit the city to a portion equivalent to the necessary professional service costs to employ a roofing expert and an engineer. The scope of services will comprise of an assessment of the property and current conditions, design and preparation of construction documents, including a construction cost estimate, and then bidding services as well, and reimbursable expenses related to their travel. Based on a quote for these professional services from the engineer and roofing contractor that prepared the two thousand ten and eleven construction plans, the maximum cost for this phase is forty thousand dollars. In accordance with the NCDOT grant, the city of Goldsboro would be responsible for fifty percent at this cost of twenty thousand dollars. This expense is not currently budgeted in the city of Goldsboro two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget. Once this phase is completed, the city of Goldsboro and NCDOT will be prepared to determine the feasibility of the next step, which would be roof construction. It's the staff's recommendation by motion to adopt the attached municipal agreement authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with NCDOT for the use of services to prepare roof construction plans and an estimate for Union Station, and two, to adopt the attached budget ordinance amending the two thousand sixteen-seventeen fiscal year budget by decreasing the unappropriated fund balance of the general fund in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and increasing the line item in the city manager's budget entitled Union Station in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Julie. Now we'll move to item M.
Mayor and council, item M is fire department automatic aid agreement between Belfast Fire Department and Goldsboro Fire Department. After looking at several areas within the city that the Belfast Fire Department technically cover that is nearly surrounded by city limits, most of these are intersections, well, all of them are intersection and roadways, to assure that we are getting dispatch services to those individuals involved in traffic accidents or vehicle fires. We have reached an agreement to do an automatic aid, automatic dispatch agreement whenever Belfast gets toned out. We would get toned out for those certain areas identified within the city limits of Goldsboro. Example would be Wayne Country Day School Road and Wayne Moore Drive. This keeps from them dispatching if something's happening, Belfast can't respond or has a delayed response. It keeps from dispatching a further away volunteer fire department where city of Goldsboro is in close proximity. This would be an automatic aid agreement. Disauthorized disagreement is provided each of the parties through mutual cooperation and predetermined plan as agreed upon in dispatch protocol by which each of them render aid to the other in case of any incident which may deem services to a degree beyond the existing capabilities of either party. It is recommended that the council authorize the fire chief, the mayor, and the mayor to enter into an automatic aid agreement in order to increase fire defense and ensure proper fire control, as well as providing reassurance needed, reserve needed to assure the community of quality fire protection. Item M is a similar agreement. This is labeled automatic aid agreement, but actually it's a mutually aid agreement. The city has signed these in the past with our bordering fire departments. Our bordering fire departments that border the city limits is Arrington Volunteer Fire Department, Belfast Volunteer Fire Department, Elroy, Marmack, New Hope, and Rosewood Fire Department. They, all of these fire departments are in the process, within the next few months they're getting their ISO rating done, and one of the documents is required that they have a mutually aid agreement. Difference between a mutually aid agreement would be if they need us, they will actually call for us instead of an automatic dispatch. Same thing, this agreement provides each of the parties through mutual cooperation a predetermined plan. Recommendation is recommended that the council authorize the fire chief and the mayor to enter into a mutually aid agreement in order to increase fire defense and ensure proper fire control, as well as providing reserves needed to assure the community of adequate fire protection. Any questions on either one of those agreements?
Do you have any comments, questions? Thank you, Gary. Item O, Chief West, I guess.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. Item O on the agenda is going to be the U.S. Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, or formerly known as the JAG Grant. Goldsboro Police Department has been notified that the federal grant funds are available from the two thousand sixteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and this is the same grant that we applied for in two thousand fifteen to purchase equipment to improve community police relations with the community. The total amount of this grant is forty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, and as in two thousand fifteen, the grant will be shared equally between the Goldsboro Police Department and the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. Each agency would receive twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents from this grant. The grant requires that an MOU is submitted with the application indicating the agreement between both agencies on the amount that each agency will receive and how the grant will be administered. In addition to the MOU, the grant application are required to be distributed to the city council for review only no fewer than thirty days prior to the application submission or before the grant will be awarded. The Goldsboro Police Department has agreed to purchase equipment to improve the department's ability to document citizen and officer interaction, and the Wayne County Sheriff's Office has agreed to purchase automatic or automated license plate readers equipment to increase their efficiency in a number of areas. It is recommended that the attached resolution be adopted supporting the police department applying for this grant. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item P, Scott, you doing that?
I am. Mayor and council, we discussed the idea of a communications director that we would share with the county in June. Council seemed at least willing to consider the idea. What I've given you this evening is an agreement that would be between us and Wayne County in terms of how we would share that position, and that we also would share the position description to talk more about that person, qualifications of an applicant we would be looking for, but the real intent was to do better communications with the community, both from the city and the county. The agreement does specify that we would not, that person wouldn't work against each other if the county and the city had an issue. That person couldn't work for the county and not the city, or vice versa on that particular issue, but in general terms, that's not been the case, the case here. We wouldn't be able to work through working with the community and getting, I guess, a consistent message out. If there are questions about the agreement or the need for the position, I'd be happy to discuss those. County manager and I have estimated somewhere in the thirty to forty thousand dollar a year range in terms of our share, so combined salaries and benefits, somewhere around eighty thousand dollars.
Any questions? All right, well, with that, then that takes care of the consent agenda, and I guess we need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Any discussion? We'll have a roll call, then?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Bertin Maycock?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Seer?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. With that, we have no items requiring individual action, so we'll move to the city manager's report.
Mayor and council, I have asked Chief West to at least come up and just give you a response to the violence in our community that's occurred really this year and then through the month of July, so with that, Chief West.
Good evening.
Good evening again. Again, as Scott was saying, he just wanted me to come up and speak in reference to the increase in violence that we've experienced here recently. So far this year, there's been a total of eight homicides within the city limits of Goldsboro, and there's been two just within the last two weeks. There's been four homicides this week, or this year so far in Wayne County, and they also experienced two within the last two weeks. This trend has got to stop, and I know by talking with each of you in the past and through the last few months that each one of you are committed to this community, to the citizens of Goldsboro, and I know that you're adamant about reducing crime within the city limits, and I can assure you, and I can guarantee you, and I want to reassure the public, that I am just as committed as you are to doing that. In reference to the crimes, not only the homicides, but any crime, if anybody in the public has any information that would assist us, law enforcement can't solve all the crimes alone. We need help from the community, and so I would encourage anybody that has any... And so I would encourage anybody that has any information, not only in these recent crimes, but any crimes in the city, to reach out, contact crime stoppers, or any other means to get it to the police department or our investigators to let us know, because again, it's going to take the community working with law enforcement to solve a lot of these crimes. Now, over the years, law enforcement in general has had a tendency to kind of build walls between not only the law enforcement agency, but also the community. And that's kind of a broad generalization of law enforcement, but then it's the requirement of the individual agencies, including mine, to try to break down those walls, to instill confidence back in the public and the trust that we may not have lost as an agency, but law enforcement in general across the country has lost. And again, that's something that I firmly believe in, and I know each of you believe in it too, and we are working together with the community events, trying to get more community events, more interaction with the police department, our officers, and the citizen, and that's what it's going to take. And again, that's something that I know we're all committed to, and we're going to move forward with it. A couple of the events that we do have coming up, speaking of community events, we've got National Night Out coming up tomorrow in Herman Park. That event is going to be from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Again, it's an opportunity for the community to interact with each other, as well as law enforcement and other agencies that'll be out there. It's another one that gets the community involved and allow law enforcement to help the community. I know we had a brainstorm with the sheriff. We've talked in the past about a community event that was kind of an offshoot of National Night Out, and that was where we came up with, along with help from area churches, that brought some suggestions to where we've got our community cares. I know we had an event a couple of months ago back at Day Point that was very successful. It's something that's going to continue to grow. We do have an event coming up in Lincoln Homes on August 6, and that event, I think, is going to run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And again, people that live in those areas, lives in those communities, I encourage you to come out, interact with us, interact with other personnel throughout the city and churches, because this is what it's going to take over on to solve, you know, the problem as far as crime. Another area that the police department, I think, is moving forward with is technology. Technology is what we're going to use and what a lot of agencies have used to target violent crime offenders, and we have embraced technology in the past, and we're going to continue to look towards new technology that's going to help us fight crime within the city. We've also created a gang suppression unit. It's not a unit that's just going to go out and identify gang members and track gang members, and if they're involved in a violent crime, arrest them. It's also a unit that's going to get in to these gangs, talk with people. We've got individuals in these gangs that want to get out, and we need to be able to give them the information and afford them the opportunity to try to get out so we can help them. It's also a gang unit that's going to go into the schools and educate the youth that aren't part of a gang, but to prevent them from getting into the gang. So it's not just a gang unit that's going to go out and do enforcement, it's a gang unit that's going to go out throughout the community and prevent future youth from being involved or getting involved in gangs. I've also reached out to the sheriff, Sheriff Pierce, to help us in the city, also to help us with the crime and help to reduce crime. And we're going to be doing this in a number of different ways. He's always been very supportive. If there's anything he can do to help us, he's always been willing to do so, and I greatly appreciate it. But you'll see more deputies within the city working with us. We've got some other units, our react team, that's still a combination between the city and the county, working together, and we're going to continue to do that, and it's going to get better. Community policing is, it's a permanent fixture at the police department. I know we've talked about it over the years, and sometimes agencies have a tendency to start it, and if it doesn't seem successful at the beginning, they get away from it. We can't get away from it, and we're not going to get away from it. We're going to continue to do it, we're going to prove upon it, and we're going to make it better. I know some of the thought of community policing is, you know, officers need to get out and engage with, in the public. I get that, and that's exactly what we're doing with these community events. I'd love to be at a position, and I know it will be eventually, that we'll have the manpower on the road to where officers can interact with the public in between calls for service. It's where we're going to be, but where we're at now is engaging the public, attending these public events, you know, and just engage and be there, and that's what it's all about. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak with you about it. I don't have all the answers, but working with you, I know we can come up with them and working with other agencies, we're going to come up with them, we're going to get it right. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come up. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Chief, I'd like for you to hit two, so I have a checklist of things that I want to talk about, and you're hitting most of them.
Okay.
But there's two I just want to be sure the public knows. One, can you talk a minute about ShotSpotter and it is operational, and just basically, some people may not even know what that is, because I've had people question me about it, so just take a couple of seconds and explain what ShotSpotter is?
Well, ShotSpotter originally, I know we've talked about it briefly, it's technology that uses acoustical sensors that will sense gunfire, and then it uses multiple sensors. Once there's gunfire, it'll triangulate the position of where the shots came from, or an area where the shots came from, and then that information is sent to an outside entity that verifies it is in fact gunshot, and then they send the information directly to the officers, not only in their cars, on their MBTs, but they also send it to the communications center, for the communications centers to dispatch the officers to the scene. So it allows us to arrive on point of a shooting or shots fired a whole lot sooner than the traditional way where, number one, people may not call shots fired in, and this system will do it automatically. So it gets us on scene a whole lot quicker and will also help us with investigating shots fired.
And the other thing that we get a lot of, that we have certain locations that are, I'm going to call them our problem locations, that we will repeatedly go and call to, getting calls for service to, where we're having the meth labs, or a lot of the problems we're having, and I know that we've got the nuisance abatement ordinance that we've started, and you don't have to name names, but just tell folks what we're doing with that and kind of what's involved with that.
Right. The nuisance abatement, there's a general statute that if you can classify through repeated calls, certain type of calls, whether it's shots fired, or fights, or domestic violence, if there's an area, whether it be a business or, you know, a residence, that's not operating as a residence, but maybe it's operating like a liquor house, it's got what they've got, a nuisance abatement. We identify it as a nuisance, we notify the owner or the property owners that we've identified as a nuisance, and you have a certain amount of time to clean up your act, basically, and cease and stop the nuisance. And if they don't abide by that within the allotted time, then it allows the department and the city to take a civil action against that entity and shut it down. And we are doing more nuisance abatement, and we're going to continue to do it. I know we've got ALE that's very supportive, they've come in, they've reactivated their nuisance abatement team, they're coming in to assist us with a couple of them that we're doing right out of the gate, and then we're going to continue to do them wherever we see a need and see a problem, then that's who we're going to aggressively go after.
Anybody got any questions for Chief West?
Thank you for what you do, Jim.
And I had, I had a couple of comments I was going to make at the end, but since you're here, we'll make them now in case anything comes out of it. But I think the, what I want to say to the public is, we are very, very serious about making our policing and our city operations safer. These last two murders we've had, I think they're just, you know, no murder's good, but the last two just seem to be so senseless. We had the 19-year-old that we just buried last Friday, probably 600 people at the funeral, and I mean, it just brings tears to your eyes, and we're not even over that. We have a unity walk on Saturday, and then we have the murder of the airman Sunday morning, and they're both, as I said, no murder's good, but these murders were just so senseless, they just, they just hit home. You know, I think growing up, most of us, we used to fight, or wouldn't get our tails kicked, or kick somebody's tails. Today, these young folks are just shooting people, and I don't know how we combat that. But what I do know is that we have, right now today, we have five unsolved, now, as of today, five unsolved murders in Goldsboro, and four of those, the kids are from 17 to 22 years old. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. And what I do know is there's somebody out there that knows who's doing this, and there's somebody out there that's not helping, not talking, and as a community, we're going to have to get involved, and I don't know if we give more money to Crime Stoppers, I think their maximum thing's a thousand, maybe privately, we could try to make Crime Stoppers and, you know, put it towards rewards, but we've got to do something to get our community talking and telling the police or somebody what's going on in this community, because that's one of the only ways that we're going to get to this. We've got these five unsolved murders, and these are bad people. They need to be off our street, and we need to work to help the police solve that. I think that's hugely important. I think during these next few months and few days, I would urge every citizen to have these families of the Maddoxes and the Airman families and their thoughts and prayers. This airman had a house in Goldsboro, he was a part of our community, lived out in the Lane Tree community. I mean, these are our folks, and we've got to look after the families the next few days as they go through all this. I do want to thank the base, Colonel Sage and Colonel Justin have both called us today, and they just said, "Look, we are here. If we can do anything to help you, we're here to help you. You know, we want to help downtown, we don't want this to be a bad image on our town or our downtown." And so the base has reached out to us, but I just want our public to know that we, this is probably the biggest problem we have right now, but we need everybody. As I've said and said and said, we are all stronger together, so we've got to stick together, and we've got to figure out how to get some of these folks off our street. And so I'm just begging, I'm asking anybody's help, we need help, and so if anybody can help us, please do. And with that, I'll be quiet on that.
All right, so you're still under your report?
And I'm done, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, City Attorney Report. Thank you, Chief West. No report. All right, Mayor and Councilmen report, let's see, we started that way last time, so Mr. Williams, are you ready?
Yeah. I'd just like to express my condolences on the death of an airman, Ryan Apollo Morgan, who was killed this weekend. My heart goes out to the family and its military community. In the face of this senseless violence, I want to reiterate that life is precious.
Very much so, thank you. Mr. Williams?
I have two things I'd like to make sure everybody knows about National Night Out. A lot of people have done an awful lot of work, and it's going to be in Herman Park from 6:00 to 9:00, and the more people we have there, the better off we can be. And walk around, talk to the people. We'll have the Crime Stoppers there, we'll have the police there, the county sheriff will be there, I think, chief. It's a time for people to talk, it's a time to be there, and it's really good. And the last thing is, I'd like to commend the Wayne County Veterans Coalition, the amazing amount of work they've done to support our military and especially our Purple Heart. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I have like two things to reiterate, what Councilman Williams said, we really need to come together and unite and try to find a way to solve our differences in different means than pulling a gun and willing someone away. And that's one of the major things, I was seriously hurt by that, I think we all are. Going on, in regards to what you were saying, Mayor, education is, I think, the key to everything. I've spoken with Ms. Selena Bennett and her team, and I are putting together a bookbag in school supply drive, and we'll be touching on inner-city schools. I know she has a Stuff the Bus initiative that will be going on August 5, and it will be going on, it was August, and then from there, together, we will be working to touch on Dillard Middle and Carver and the schools there, and inner-city schools that are detrimental to needing help in the school supply. So I urge you to, if you are out there, please come and help support us in extra school drives, or bring supplies to Ms. Bennett at the Chamber of Commerce, or bring school supplies here to the city hall, and we will, I will leave them for me, and I will make sure that she gets them, we get them distributed to those schools. So I'd like to say thank you for that. And one other thing, I have some people happy birthday to, so Brittany, Abigail, and Mr. Hayden, happy birthday to, and we go on.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacob?
The only thing, you know, I was moved Saturday morning at the community prayer walk, that the Maddox family just buried their daughter the day before, and they were there. And we walked past where their daughter was killed. It had to be tough, though, but there was a good crowd, I'd say we had somewhere between 150 and 200 people, but the whole community is what it's going to take. It's got to be where we're willing to help bring out these criminals, get them arrested, and put them where they belong. But we got to do it, we can't sit back and wait for somebody else to do it. We got to do it now. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Foster?
I just think that, you know, we do a lot of talking, and that it's time to stop talking, it's time to actually do some work. We have to get in these neighborhoods and do some work. I mean, whether it's community policing, community coming together, whatever it is, as the word says, faith without works is nothing, is dead. So you have to do some work, and we have to get in our communities and take them back over. We can't continue to let these thugs run our community, we can't continue to let our kids get killed on the street. These are our communities, they've been great before, we have to make them great again. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. No comment?
Okay. Just a couple of things, just kind of following, piggybacking on what Ms. Jacob said, the unity walk Saturday was really good. It was really inspiring, I think, to see the Maddoxes out there, and I don't think I could have done that, and especially do what they did, so it was just very, very heartfelt to have them there. And the Interfaith Ministries and Ms. Easton that put all that together in their church, they did a great job. Also on Saturday, Pastor Marvin Alexander had a neighborhood day at his church, which is New Spirit Church, and he had a really good crowd, the police, the fire, the sheriff, the sorority sisters, a lot of folks were out there, and they had a really good day, so I just want to commend them for doing that. And basically, that's their third one, and what they do is, instead of doing something, they do something for the neighborhood, so they invite all the neighbors around them and all, and they had a good crowd, so I was glad to see that. And just want to be sure of what Chaco is putting on with all her folks, the Our Community Cares, which Chief mentioned, it's this Saturday, August 6, from 6:00 to 8:00, and it's at Lincoln Homes. Anybody's invited, we encourage anybody to come, it's in the ball field out there, and the more people, the better, so anybody will come, we'd love to have you. And then, as everybody said, National Night Out's tomorrow night at Herman Park. So with that, I hope everybody has a good rest of the week, and we'll stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.